Lines owned by Prasa and railway lines owned by Transnet. And we all know what you both these entities. One reports to the Minister of Transport, one reports to the SOE, which gives us a challenge. If you go to north, railway lines are not being repaired because that line is owned by Transnet. And we've been saying, "Gua Prasa, use your money because you are all SOEs, no repair online and claim from Gua Transnet." Abafu Nguwenzalok. As a result, passengers are suffering. Yes, we are sitting here, have to support this bill, but how is this bill going to assist us, Chair? Having all these challenges. In fact, it's a bit too good to have confined us to what you have submitted to us. But Ngifisa Nazzi, as our leaders, whom we elected to represent us in Parliament, that in this region of KZN, we have challenges, Gua Prasa. Things are not running very well. And we've been saying to management, "Abalungisizi", they're taking their own time to sort things out. I've just have made few notes here. We have old decaying trains in this region. It's signaling because it's on the railway. It's very bad. Nobody is looking after our signals. And as a result, because there is no other mode of transport. And our main worry is that during the metro rail time, there was no such thing. And again, rail safety inspection. I can see that in this bill. You've got rail safety inspectors. As far as with Babi, we have never seen them. We don't even know where their offices are. We have so many challenges, Gua Rail Safety, but we don't know who to report to. I can see that we've got a composition of the board. The manner in which the board is made, one will recommend it must be elected. Each province must be represented in the board so people of that province to reach the board member as and when it arises. I'll be honest to you, Chair Persil. I have the contact of two board members. They're both from Jopek. I send them emails, no response. I send them communication in terms of letters, they do not respond. The one who came made huge promises, but those promises were not fulfilled. He was coming from, he resides in Jopek. So if he is not from this province, it's obvious he doesn't care about our sufferings as KZN people. So one will recommend to all provinces, our represented group, that should be elected. And then, our safety inspections are ones we were together with members of the community because we know our safety inspectors will go there for the sake of tick, 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 tick and submit a report. And when you go and do a physical check, you see how good what is in the report is totally not correct. It's misinformation. And again, I have just browsed through the bill. It does not address the safety of commuters. You must re-look at the bill and deal with the safety of commuters because our commuters are not safe. Yeah, Siyafisa, we are the last one, Chair. I've got so notes, but I'll just take our forms Jobushilo and do our submission as a UCV. People are suffering a lot. Those trains must come back. We know that some of the people, Abakashogo, Prasa, they've got Amateks. So that is why these things are happening. Because of all these things, essence of Allah.
Niabingalen. Ikamanguka Elihle Ngakasbia from Watford One. No, owa me gubili. Eh, gu konninga ku. One, mchampe, i bili funi adresse, i ndo yekaring capacity, etimeleni. Two, i karing capacity, in ngendele ogochi, estimela, gamitigmele slaysha bandaba about fifteen, mchampe gui coach. Coach slaysha bandaba about three hundred. But i root cause, yogochi, abandubakwa aliwi estimela kakulu. I chambi punda mbesbile le interval. Gwenzek estimelchochi esuagama samba ngoan ngoan ngoan. It's since we sambongo pass three. So, o wongu mundo o wongena ngochu, o wongena ngo dri. Uzo kwinon kapi estimela sa one. So, u addressa i karing capacity nama intervals between our trains. Ne consistency i gu ma schedules. Cause eight times, estimela, genza, twasile iti, ngochu hours, no man ngo sixty minutes. Aga kumundo o nganganiye i woning no mu koshwe, umuzoba le iti, ngochu hours msebenzina, ngobeti ma ssebenzisa, uge msebenzin no me go pan i parish. And the two, u eti mfasi, ule ye yama vendors, etimeleni. Ogochi, funu benendele o gure kuleta na kona, ogochi, who need to do what, at what time, from where to where, Niabon.
Greetings. My name is Kailis Chesbia from Watford One. I only have two things to add to the bill. I wish that the bill should address carrying capacity in the trains. You'd find that sometimes you, a coach should take about fifty people, but it would have, end up having three hundred people in one coach. That is caused by the fact that you may find that the intervals between the trains are too long and people need to catch the earlier trains. Secondly, the schedule between, or the intervals between trains, the consistency of their schedules as well. And also, we'd also like to say that the vendors in the train stations be regulated. Thank you.
Greetings to the Members of Parliament and thanks for the opportunity that you are getting today. My name is Tembe Somgenge from UPH, the Hostel Association, about safety. People suffer in trains in terms of safety. Police should be brought back. If you check in media, there are no railways, no junctions. And the junctions are being stolen by foreign nationals who bring these junctions to the scrap yards. And a lot of crime is happening in the scrap yards during these days. And the issue of intervals, the intervals are inconsistent and this leads to high capacity of people being congested in the trains. They push each other and others get injured. Please check clearly before you pass this bill. The government has already failed us a lot. Take your time when passing this bill. And please bring back the trains. It's the trains that we can afford. Thank you.
Kalu bingalela. Eusla alonitaful. Eh, sibome ogochi, eh, i Parliament iliziksinabant. Ikamala muestembe songfusi, isuwa eh Wat 107. Eh, I'm a Wat Committee Member under Transport, Road and Stomals. Eh, ngajabulu oto ilitube. Eh, sibunka videos agos, eh Wat 4 and 44, enand. Eh, ngzobera ngemel, pe ink area, eh, umashu, nduzo manand. So it's a challenge, Gua Prasa, ogochi.
Ngoba, njongo ba benza ngani? Baya sebenza njela ya bu na bu. Ngoba msebenza au. Bestela uko ti ba kashu. Ngoba uksé benzi sana na bu. Kuzo silegele, unga ulégele luloli, unga ulégele u u u u u pras. Uko si xsewegi ma. Le ma la ba iki pa every day. Funke ba 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 farama kebul amash. Funke ba lungisa kupla wana gele kon. Funke ba kokelis timela sa shugel. Funke benzin. Le oma libinga puma iya mpagatini. Uko ti ba nga sayenza leon. Ba sebenze ku sebenzo mpagat. Bestela ekem kampa ama co-op. Azogu azogu sebenzi sana norilue. Azogu azogu sebenzi sana na bu. Unkumuntu sebenza. Uko si sebenzi sana ngia bon.
Greetings to the members of parliament. I am Pumla Ntobela from Chesterfield. And thanks for the opportunity decided to come to us. A lot has been covered by the previous because what I was going to say. About security, prasa and transport and and transnet. They should be, security should be increased in their numbers. Because for now, we don't even see what they are really doing. Security management appears to be dysfunctional. There is no technology in these places. They can also use even the drones to suit our times of today for us to be safe. And especially in Hamas day, rail lines are being stolen. Because the level of unemployment is very high. So, most of the foreign nationals are stealing these rail lines. We really plead that you will bring back the co-op. So that the committee will be able to take care of these rail lines. Thank you.
San monani, bingela bongama paga ting, bingela bapaati. Ikama ngu amashla wango, ngu suguwa nde itinani. Nguzo sugu, ngukumeli uti ya watso yani. Si bongaka ngikuti aniti, nguzo silete la wana. Koda besfis uko ti bestela. Uko tinis eteleloke itimeleni. Bestela uko si kubekoni management itimeleni. Ya bongama parata itimeleni, gwenzela ikra ilekriminal. Niachonje la na, gwenzaga wakeloko gi animala. Mene futi kubekona, bolesin zimpia ekbanbe na ngani, ekbanbe na kzone. Bestela uko tinis faghele, ezibaka mfaats. Stela nukuti kubekonu mundo, olo sulele itimela. Ki nzekstimela sifanga finges kats. Kwesi ngis kats, stimela sngashi uko si sofia ngas kats. Sinis boleng stimela sese ngani. Si bongeka kulu, nganzo bamninga kulu. Siala lo mgele u u sizo leeni. Koda besfela, uko ti masenu let sizo leenu. Klapen izokipa u six billion. Kune uti ni file la, kwe ongi msebenzele twa uti ayfawa. Bestela uko ti masenu ifagi, uti ngai uko si ubano qualifiedayo, ubano unga qualified. Besfis uko ti niina. Ezaba patsi, ntsate yonki uti. Gobis kates nengi, katsama ke, kwa tatawa tasebo sroshiya nummin. Aba ngahamba na yonale information, la bashen, enmani ga yon. Ngenye ngenyigisina la, asa azogu zenro, sinisatawa tatawa tala. Aba asaxshisha basheba, ngabamshula ntuza, ngamasa sasa nginginformation. Bestela, natsi njenge uti, tinis fagheba, ngakuronge la ntuza. Masu uko ti klappe after five years, oh two years, ngayabo five years mkuu gakun. Masen ba amas certificates, oh shows eb qualified. Koda menza ala, nenga shuku ti siango, uko si ubano qualified. Nenga ifutanga resti zim, siya bon.
Greetings, I would like to thank you for having come uh come to us. I was, my name is Amat N'Gongo, I will speak for the youth. I would like to firstly state that please add some kind of management inside the trains. Also, the rails that we use to hold on, could we get better ones inside the trains? Also, there should be a consistent train announcer. Because sometimes you'll be waiting there and then you just see a train or you you won't you won't know that that's the train you're waiting for. And also, now, as you are bringing this, we know that there will be some funds that will come in, there will be job opportunities. Please include youth in those. Please do not use old people and also in your selection. Please put aside qualifications, let people come in. Maybe after two years, you can give them certificates that they are now qualified. Thank you.
San monani, lo okulmana pamweni unoka nyangwa ramchela, ngisuka kuwa at seventy-five. Ngisoku mela indaba itimela. Singa abantu ana beskolos, sia sugola, masu uki bela iztimela. Ngoba kuyanze gasfige paratas, sfio konna abantu aban 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 iki la mkuu. Mas ngene itimeleni, kiyanze kubekonu mundo otu vula, iskuama sakonkonzu petil. Na no uko ti ke guaba ni, kwesi ni itimela, kuyanze kubekonu mundo otu vula, iskuama sakonkonzu petil. Mi na five years ago, unga limala iztimeleni, ntsakchanchosemi apeng. En futi lapo ayka zisungelo indaba ya mi kutwe klappe konna intengzweni. Si akela na no uko ti futi, masu kfigele itimela ge ezintam, inchonje twa atis zofi. Stela uko ti kubekona eh lalo ezaneli, kubekona no uko ti konna inda wo ezomele eh lali abantu abatala gakun. Ugoze ngabekona uprase sanwa, kubekona incha ekumbi sa uweyi sa wanta batala mbe funu klan. Si akela uko ti klu nishwa. Si akela na no uko ti futi, inchoba njegu konna ingane ez nometriki eh lal pantas ngenziluto. Zin, zbona, zbona la, zingenza, zingenziluto. Si akela uko ti sifagu msebenzin. Nabanye bayawazu, uko uko ba nga pumelila gametikwa, kota bebe bena makon. Si akela uko ti nababunye lo wop, kumsama konna babana ngia bon.
Greetings to the members of parliament. I am Nogukanya Mchela from ward seventy-five. I'm a learner. As a learner, a lot of crime takes place in the trains. And five years ago, I got injured. Until now, I've never been compensated. There should be enough seats in the trains. Also provide the seats for the elderly. There are lots of meticulous who are loitering and sitting at home, who are doing nothing. If you can bring skills for those, so that we get help. Thank you.
San monani, ngibingela la amalu ngipalamende mpagats. Mi na kama la mkuu tembelile makanya, ewa at one oh three. Ngikulmela aba fundi eh from siya bon, itimela uko ti vule. Ngoba i transports iabi zamateks siya bon, uko ti vule. Koda in terms of me, na si lala eh Paks Farm, Paks Farm in between of i Clifteli ne njongwin. So, as na sistesi ni mikilapa, as na sistesi itimela zifiga epsuka kulu uko ti eh sekalupsi. Xwe examniama from masuke Paks Farm si a njongwin, si okulis timela. Na lapo futi, ah lala nama sekuu tien njelen. Istesi sasen njongwe, diinje si vandalize, tikaku lu akon. Aziko ngishinda ozokhlala, ai kimpopo, awake amad socials cancela, ipukosi sepsi kama njegu mnyam. Awbon no mutu langanana, no ma rohlanganana, akon ngishinda rohlala. Gui, mi nginje, intengenzee kila paya eh Paks Farm. Koda itimela ilhula konala, amakusa ilhula konala Paks Farm. Ziningi, ivini, sinenda we insa ngazozo, sinikros level, yokhula ilo. Ah mi moto me ilhule stimeleni, ai konna u safety, ai lungi siwe, ingane. In terms of uko ti, i kole zingale kwa la in, in kampan zingale kwa la in. Koda asitso li safety eh eh rights bestela abantu uko ti. Nispegele, sasesti sasen njongwin, iski blaxon. Ni pinani spegele futi, ingane uko ti. Zi safety, ngoa bebe ekelukuma la paya pants, iztimela nme sugu Paks Farm. Zi sugu apesule stimela ntsi sara zeki pants no park. Koda sasenji siu so nze, lalappe uko iste shano, aba wazo sutilik. Ziningi, siya pugi, ingane, si chakistimala gumyama, nama para gumyama. Iki, iti stensi, yinde gakun, lukuswe njongwin. We use Paks Farm ne njongwin, kuti gakun, ngishwe i Clifteli, kuti gakun. Si akela, banje ngawa nusizo, nisizo, siya bon.
Greetings, my name is Tembelile Makanya from ward one one oh three. I'll speak on behalf of the learners. We thank you for returning the trains because transport is quite expensive. I live in a place called Paks Farm. And we don't necessarily have a train station. We have to use a train station that is quite far from us. Which then leads to a lot of injuries when people have to get on or get off the trains. And also the fact that the schools, the companies and sort of like resources are across the line. So there is no safety measures when we have to cross the line. Please, if we can look into that, thank you.
Good morning. I'm from, my name is Nathan Sewell, from KZN Subsystem Fisherman. And I speak for myself and for people from Amblasi, Lamondville, and the rest of the people from the South Coast. For the last couple of years, we were experiencing many, many different problems. My first priority is security regarding this railway. Secondly, is a safety. Thirdly, the power times and the signaling of the trains. Fourthly, these permits that this bill mentions, are we gonna pay for them or they're gonna be for free? Fifthly, are we gonna pay for tickets? Seven, servicing of these locomotives. Eight, taking off, the locomotives take off before the people can even exit the trains. See? Number nine, number nine, who do we claim from? Regarding this railway, this railway infrastructure that's put into place, who do we claim from as commuters? If and should we get injured? Is there hotline or is there somebody we speak to? Or you're gonna give us any information regarding this, this, what's called this, this, this claim that we make, should and if somebody get injured? That's all I've got to say, thanks a lot.
Nga sala spreade lava ndu, so pindas vule ni tu. Eh, kamikigi iskata nyana baba, akasizu ti, ya.
Eh slalo, zingibongo mnyaza, njichutane nganu slado. Slalo, zingitigula ba abastoli gela u slado. Uma ngabe kuwate ku kulumasi na, uyato liga. Uma ngabe kulumaa lava abezizu, agato liga. Kona ngesa, utu mina ngizwa, agale juan kela la pants. Masu kulumabe zizu slalo, be lokunye benke benke ilulis.
Alright, siya bon ba baba, si sao sao keni se, ngisuku du kutoli kwa songis kati. Alright.
Enga bingela la, bingela bapaati, eh ngapaga ti, ngia bonaba kulu uko ti. Uko ti nize, nizo za uvule tu, ku yo nithe ballegile. Eh na kwasespa tada ngazu ti siyapi. Eh izin ton, uko ti ndizi shwa, ini ngakun. Eh kala, ngashone loa unpoetu, eh stimelia nisya inka baba. Eh, i moto industry, ma olimele ne moti, ino ino love. Agazame akokeleke, ngasube bani ngabantu aba kulumide ngzotela. Uko ti ndaloko, nikfange, kota uma ngabe, umuntu ezoklema, ngoba kufanele kiile. Kune nzegi ikona pshini, uko na galakwe zinto. Eni chitnja, kala lo ko nipega kulu. Na ununtu shonele, ku yanga juwa, no mulimele ikona ini, i i organization. No ma eh da ezogu azuti, afake konna iklemi akoko kota. Ayfange, ngokondile, ay ngokosha kala. Owasidile, enfu kulmanako. Eh, itimela xale zilechi njalo. Zonki zugu, eh abantu osonze itimela naba kulmayo, pasalebe polisanjalo, ngizenbati abgele. Zonke izinsugu, eni agahu unkashi. Ofuni uko ti mangabe, ngenu age, kukada uko ten. Jena la, eholo, defa ni ostaro, uko ten. Kona silese kala ngoba ni, o twenty past ten. Iskati is very, very important. Ai ko into eju li skati, ngoba, nogu ufaguan de skati, nogu zalagu de skati. Ngakua ba, uko ti ndiglungi, sello ko, iskati sibalegi. Owasitati. Ngia kela, yonke into ikala eskolue. Bezinda ne, ngana ngazozo ngenzaranjani. Kubekonu shelo, no uko ti ba fundi se, uko uko ti. Uloliwa uini, wenzani, ini asu zangayo. Nikale ingane ini. Ay abantu sebo nagaye, sebo nagale yonki into, ababa fundi malengeli, mapagele teni. Eh nikale lapo ni fundisi ingane, the sense of ownership. Ya baba, ai ko incha eju uko ti, uma unchele gi moto. Di part as if, eh yami. Eh, ngazozo, ya shona, the sense of ownership. Ya baba, man di niyo zupretingi paralel, wozu kuwa elupretila. Li part as if, eh laku. Siti ngasungisi, sense of ownership. Obasenacho uwa, ay, asfu ni ukuwenzala yon. Umuntu azi pepa, aja mashipsaka, anekuinyan, alashia ti ndako, alashenga ti niaku. Ngia kela yon, ni fundise eh kolue ni, in needness, i healthness, yonke yon. Nenga ilashi, ngoba, inda bilan payana, ingane ne eskolue. Ai ko kina sashio, omunyu siswati hamba, ngazozo siyapi. Ogunye ngenyaguo shoko kina. Iti disability. Ya baba, ni disability, oh disability. Ukuva zega, ngia kela, nikpegelele, eh iteshini. Na makoshi eh, uko ti, abantu aba kuva zegile, aba hamba eh 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 engendu. Abanye eh eh ba hamba ngola, abanye abezwa, eh eh abanye ba ba o tansiru. Ni tansiru, abantu abayazi gakukulu, tina. Ni ba pekelele, uko ti, how can we help them? Ni ba pegelele, asinga ba koso, aba kuva zegile, ngoba mukulu. Ala shoma uko si soka sosali, ingane njani, ezipelele, i sipo ingani. Ezpuma mukulu, ngako, uaseta yonki intu kulu, ngaku ni ngazayon. Alu kweni shukulu. Deliso, abantu bakunisozo njani, ma benengali eh kuva zegile, ba hamba boy fisha, eh kolene tiso. Ba fishen daune tiso, kanti ingani. I i lungelu la, ku be na yon, no me kuva zegile, no may kuva zegile, no ma indi, no ma inji. Ngia kela, iteshi zemu, nama koshi eh, nenga ba koso, aba kuva zegile, ya bon.
Greetings and thanks for coming. I only have just a few things to say. Firstly, I lost my brother in a train accident to Umka Baba. Now, in such instances, the motor industry has RAF, RAF in short. But now, we would like to know what are places or where can one actually lodge a claim for such things? Now, we should also just try and ensure that there is no corruption with this. Also, secondly, trains are always late. Time is very important, even here, we were here at ten, but we started at twenty past ten. Time is very important. Thirdly, there should be a program to teach school kids about a sense of ownership. They should know what railway is, they should know what it means to their lives, what it can bring to their lives. Fourthly, disabled people or people living with a disability. They should, you should also be very considerate to them in terms of the train stations as well as the coaches that they use. Thank you.
Eh, ome pambilusi, I'm Katt from ward seventy-nine Amblasi. Eh, enga gusho njongo ba, yeah, guvusalelo mchetu, ngoba mokpepe itimeleni. Okay, itimela zozopa, banbaktuale itimeleni, safety, izoba right. Kuna bazalbeitu, already, abataisala, ba bezama venwa bekshiu. Already, masu be, masu masu renovatiwe, bazososo bazalbeitu ngoba. Skule ngabo be taisala be itimeleni. Si afisuku ucha bazalbeitu bezoso itimeleni, ulen ndadu bezola kzone, bannga pezele. And two, even the text industriali, njongo ba abantu bezo buya, mani baktuale itimeleni. Amategi, ngasa kehaba, mani chalu ikeshapa. So, inda we la behamba la kzone, ngakuti, zoba seku sefe itimeleni, ngudese amali itimeleni. Si afisana abapine bannga pezele abantu, agate bevese, bebenefita, galasakati wale, ingane mbakne okrin, sengvala. Ya ose zitimeleni, xoko kama the tender system. Si afisuku na banbe ndau, omasutwa ngene, ndigamash, no me ge ipi. Pasongule, ivini na banbesmame, koba lenja matenda, eh abantu abatisi. Paki ngabantu, abakula eholo, kati bezo pasipeti, muzutwa na ngamateni bannga tulit, tuanga, ya bon.
Greetings to the members of parliament. I am Siam Katt from ward seventy-nine. There are vendors in trains who are our parents. They are to be removed after this, the passing of this bill. So they should be compensated for that. In trains, I know that there will be tenders, there will be tender system that will be established. Everybody should benefit from these tenders. Thank you.
Chepessen, Chepessen and all the leaders within this building. My name is Nkostenaz Emmanuel N'Gogo. I'm coming from ward one oh three. I've heard all what our leaders have said, right in front of us, we're hearing everything. But before I raise my inputs, I would like to ask a simple question. And as leaders, I know you're going to answer me, but don't be political on this one. But I'm asking a simple question. Would Mr. President come in this place as I came alone? Yes or no? No. No, 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 I'm asking a question. Would he come alone? No. Why? Safety measurement must be considered first. Because safety is very important for him. And if he can come, maybe about anybody that will be inside in this room. Others will be outside and the helicopters will be moving in and out, making sure that he is safe. But I'm getting inside the train, we are mostly the people who are using train. I'm representing Paks Farm and Clifton. Where this main line is there. I call it the economical line because good train are there and trains as well are there. It's our lines. So, this is why I'm asking this question because I have seen how leaders treat us. It's good for us when you leaders get money from us. But it's bad for us when we are unsaved and at the same time looking for money to us. And I was a victim in the train. It was twenty seventeen, twenty seven December. Three guys came in at Shongwin, they took everything from me. And I went back to Deben to report that thing in regional office, Pras Regional Office. There was a manager that was there, unfortunately, he resigned, I think three years, four years ago. I told him what happened in the train, but nothing has happened up at that. So, we are requesting you to make sure that you are bringing securities inside the train from Deben to Kato, Kato to Deben, to make sure that people are saved inside the train. And the other thing that is so dangerous, even now, I grew up knowing that trains are full of sets. Twelve coaches. They're accommodating, we're accommodating people. Then we reduced into eight, six. Now, in a number of people who are using trains. And inside the train, there is an illicit activities that has been developed. At the same time, people who lead us, they claim to fight each other, police violence, but they're forgetting what is happening against that train. We have two people, women, some of them are made in different ways, some are fat, some are. But when trains are full, overcrowded, there is something happening inside the train to those people. They get robbed, others are being, you know, inside the train. And that make the journey to be unsafe and unenjoyable. So we ask you to make sure that everything is put into order, so that you're able to trust train safety. The other thing that is happening, that I would like to talk about is that when we go to Umdeni, we always pass and see at Deben Yard. There are lots of coaches that are there, we don't know, maybe it's shunting or they are fixed or something. We don't know what's happening, but when you just digging up, want to find out, you'll find out that there's an issue in Rolling Stock. Rolling Stock says there are no path to fix the train. At the same time, people are overcrowded today. So I have seen that there's something that is not going well in our leadership. I'm hoping all these things are noted down in order to assist us as community. The last thing I want to say with you guys is that we don't need you to just sit here only. Be practical, move in our communities and see what problems are we facing. As the one lady that was here, she mentioned that in Paks Farm, there's no station. It was twenty twenty twelve, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. M E C, I think of segment was Thomas Mier. He was there addressing the community. I told him with Mr. Mier, right on the ground where you are in, that's the station for these people of Paks Farm. They jump in here, they ride in here for train. In this time in South Africa, there is no station in other communities, are struggling. If they want to ride a train, they travel something like twenty k's, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Che? Do, do we? Oh, okay. Um, esboni slalo, ikama la mkuu tembelile N'Gogo, waga what, zero one zero three. Ogningi saba bekshilo, ngisoba njeno mbozo woto, umenge mela ngesa, in yetwala. Eh, ngageze, ngoba upepa kballegile. Klappe ge maya ngafiga, nganke nama bodyguard, ngndiza nama panoi. Um, gandige, tina sasenze sake itimela, si lalala paya eh Paks Farm, nama eh Clifton. Eh, sesbonile, kuka ba holebe tu baspataranjani. Eh, gandige, futi, no uko ti, mi na kobolwa ami, ngigenge abaga isisulu. So, so bekemenge stimela ngo twenty seventeen, ngaba njunguzi, inzizo ge in datu, ngahamba ngayobiga la paya. Eh, te wini, kota ge agukwa wenzeka, uze bekemant. Um, kala ge itimela zazizi, nde kota sezehlisiwe, ukuwelswa kuwetimela abantu banda, logo wenzu uko ti itimela yetwale. Logo wenzu uko ti ge besa kuba nukebenga, ogmingi eh itimeleni, ogushu uko ti ge. Sizo ntsala futu uko ti ge, nengatunye, kela ngokala la, popo mani, nihamba mpagatini. Nizo uwa zego, ubona ge in, kingasuke nenezo. Ngoba kuko zini ndau, asinazo ngisho iteshi zazu itimela nize, siya bon.
Eh, ngabingela la nonke, i kama, ngoma nda, isne, waga ngobisbono. Ngii, la eh manfa ne, peli ngitungo khal. Ward sixty-five. Weni ngi ngala fa eh, ewo ngatkeni kwe skati eh, iki me. Si bekshilo, gane ngilo. Ngi ngala, amo wa tinjufaga, eskala zo ngalo, uktiweka, ukumbulu uko ti, inu line. Ikotorish, eh u line lo, ukuwa ifeiva, uko ti niyaki cheliso, eh u line niwa makuzo lo. Enga na kwa umuntu indaba ya ko, ukale pants, futi, uki bela ini tegi, skatu, kushai tegi te stimela. Iaslima zaga leon. Owsbili, ngala ilu, ngala ilu, ngisegede, eh 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 lo line no kuwa omakuzu. Itimela kota subesha. Owsbili, eh itimeleni, masuke si uki bela eh so mpagati, si zinkolo eh shuka shugel. Mo uti ongena, ngatungena, ile inkolo. Kuwe peseza zuti manje wene, ongenza, eh imkomoya leon kolo. Eh, gubenama kama, nama njatune, ekombu wote kaya, we wena la, zikala umenare, no masikala budo. Ya bon, ngia kala, nilo, ngi ise, sisuke la pasiva, la siyakona. Zikoni la, zokonze la, uxi smpepi, semsam, akona maso. La pamanisont, aglu, kota nanga pazamise, abanye aban, wengayinkolo za. Aglu ngilelo. Eh, ngibesu, ngikela futi, eh ku le yokpepe itimela. Ama preach la wa, eh kuwa asuele kuona, singa hambila, eknumu kuskona. Ay, abukwe ngatmatala, uko zini ezendeau. Mo uti ya we hamba, uwa zuko ti, u u ubona pants. Ubonu uko ti, awa ngaye, lamanga twa ngi, kuwa ngani, spegapants, ya bon. Hamba ngakulegi. Ngia kala uko ti, aza mo ti, alu ngiswa kabusha, eh ama preach la, basuele kuona. Eh itimela ni, kuwe apenya eh itimela. Ututu ti, angana tuwa ise kishidi, la wano funu understand. Eh, ukuwshu nginu futu nje, apenya, nde eh tuni ngakuva si, eh umkondu umuntu la. Ekunye nukusu, uzo pe mumuntu ngali, isimbambi li, ndu ya ate, uze kaba nuzo kabu ngali. Se pazamisa, amanyama du, ngaga manja aba kibele itimeleni. Si akela, ni kigelele lo, uko ti ka, ittransportileana, eh astronipanili, eh ku yo. Ngikela kuma la, ngia baba gakulu.
Siabong.
Siabong.
Greetings to the members of parliament. My name is Mancha Raheisa Ngobo from Ward 65, from Bennington. There is, there is a lateness in trains. If you complain about the lateness of trains, a lot of stories are told and nothing happens to rectify this. Also, in these trains, there are different religions that you find in. Some coaches are dominated by congregants of different religions and if you get there, you must feel that this is a particular religious group. About safety, the working bridges that you are using are very, very old and dilapidated. Please refurbish them for us because they are dangerous now. And people are smoking in trains and when they smoke, the smoking in trains is not good for our health and others, after having smoked the weed or whatever, they become violent and that is not good for us as commuters in trains. Thank you.
Ngibingalela, i parame ndelonke, no shali obonke umphakati. Eh, i kama lame, ubonkoso wanzusa. Eh, ngibuya M Laza, Ward 88. Eh, i karo zami, uloliwa akseya naloya eskuligwa uloliwa. Senye nyee inu fasinenja. Uloliwa ati ngapemenza estimeli, beguna mapoi sa bekon. Amapoi sa awaseko estimelini, utwala ugo ti, amapoi sa mabili, ahambi estimela songa jaba sisi te, senka, kubkebenga, uswabunga kaka, estimeli. Eh, kupindela pa M Laza, tililo kuwa fika, lendo utwa ziku kula, nama na lendo le, eh, utwa, elisifarete si kon. Zashotya itimela, zashotya, zashotya, lutwa itimela zikimlaza kuwa la two hours, three hours, onga ibon. Ngipinde, ngitale, ugo tila paya ma uyagwamnyando, eh, onga rafi ki emoli, befonge, use le poti. Ntale la uti, abantu wa 300, besi zela, ba besta gali plinge, paya afabantu la pa, be awati, be ngamula me nyao, jala estimela shaisumundu, ngchambeng, ngonya ra utu ti estimela, shaisemota kene, wabantu. Moba inba ngamula me nyao, eh, abantu seba faralesi, nde faromajebi, abasa si zustimela nomaska. Siatela, uktuwe faripilijila, bewa sabantu ba, be pesu be ngampans. Ngibuisa, ngipinden kaale, jobangshale M Laza ngindo ta, esugampamene. Yaktela 300, eh, esbuisele pele itimela zaisugala, etepen stichiswa shaykolela. Injegose nyuguila, aksebenzi, ama tezasmula la. Siatela, eh, buisela maprimandi mbala. Ngibonge.
Greetings to the committee and the chair. My name is Nkosi N'Zoza, I'm from Ward 88 at Umlazi. My complaints are that railway is no longer what it used to be. Before, you could not smoke dacha in a train because there were police there, they were visible. Since the floods as well as COVID, there's been quite a shortage of trains at Umlazi. And also, we request that Transnet puts a bridge just before Umnyandu Station because people are dying, they're trying to cross the railway line. I'm from Bangane. Then, we request that Transnet return the trains that go all the way to Colola because transport is quite expensive now, those trains used to assist us a lot. Thank you.
Good day parliament. My name is Craig Marilia from Ostevo, Ward 68. I'd like to inquire about your safety. Please, you need to put cameras in the trains and by the stations. So those who vandalizing the trains and the stations, can we court their end, please? And also to protect the fishermen, when you're fishing, in South Devon Basin area, you're going to the west, you need to, all people who are walking, walking in the South, South Devon Basin, you need to protect your in training and trains. Thank you.
Ngibingalela, kama lame, kwe Craig Marilia, ngifisa ngusho uktele lo, ugo ti akfagale, eh, ama camera, eh, itimelini ngokjalo na se techi, ngoba ke, agupepila neze, eh, itimelini ngokjalo na se techi. Gandige umundu osabenza la apu, nomundu hamba la apu, ushla zage enga zezwa, eh, pepila, ngabong.
Sanbona. Apam gobo kulumu, mfo gawa, i malapo, ay, ngakshukubek, uzokulumu. Ngifuna ju guti, sivulela banya ba funu kulumu, goda ngifuna ucho loku, befongi wa vulela ugo ti, eh, ekaleninga, azuguti abanya be tuva fige seskali. Stasis okulumu, ngere rail safety bill, eh, la apam gwech. And sisa, kaya lo guti, umdo ma ikulumu, achu ugo ti, yine atabanga ugo ti, kule bill, akaswisi, ugo ti fanele ugo ti bekon. Oka nyekule bill, yine shoda yo, abespecifikule zozid. Zela ni toli, tolikele abasi khlali, abasi kuhambe, mina kulumu na abasi khlali.
I didn't catch most of it, Chair, because we thought it was fine.
Isopi.
Please.
Ngiti, maso zovulela banya ba zo kulumu, ngikela ugo ti, ngikumbuza ne ugo ti, besi te, okisukulumu yo makunama ne, ne rail safety bill, le ilapa pam gwech.
We had initially stated that if a person would come and put their views, could they be a bit direct into the bill that is in front of us?
And isosiza lo, ugo ti, sa zuguti, askulumu, gezboz ningi, esingazu kwa zuguti, sense and doo ninga azu.
That will assist us in that we will not be discussing a lot of things or a lot of issues that we cannot really do anything about.
Ben kulumeka kulumu la logo, ngikela lo esbi ini, ugo ti besi, kela ngemi zuzu, emi tat.
I had spoken quite a lot about that and I had also requested that a speaker only has about three minutes.
If base konabanya ba da funu kulumu, sizo pinda status nizanda.
Should there be?
Tabanga ugo ti simelba siema petelu in ngobango, bringati, seskulumo kunyonga pani le kwe bill.
Should there?
Koto agupelanga, jobabe seskati si, ugo ti siseno uwalafutu.
Should there be others who wish to speak? We'll take a few hands, but it looks like we are drawing towards concluding because we can see now people are talking about issues that are really not into the bill, but as we had said, it doesn't end here, one can actually write as well.
Ba konabanya ba safunu kulumu, status zandla before akulumu zaghwe tulapa?
Are there others who wish to speak so that we can take hands before the gentleman speaks?
Number one, Ungaeza Baba. Number two, Opagamisipapa Laapo. Ngapau konomo ye. All right, all right, all right. Enga cha ngbonis nisang.
Looks like that's just about it, I don't see any other hand.
Isoba zeso, klenuka kobe ka mfo gawa.
These will be the last ones.
Ngabongasla. Ngabingalela, i kama lame, ngikumanza, waga ngatisbon, ewate, ngamragi onangso, eh, Ward 98, laktu akonsamka waba. Eh, uzokulumu, ngela ngzo kulumu, ngaje, kulumela isav, ngoba, last name, inkinga kon, nama osoga, M Bumbul, ofolu in Adam, susu, kume koshafstin, falela abasi, komtampela, ngenge ugo ti, ulai ni itimela kasebe, bayale ngakumanche. Ke pa, ngoba siya funu ugo ti, kubekonuklungis, sinesfiso futu so ugo ti lepi, eskulumu ngayo siwazu, kui mugela si pasis. Kotwa sfiso ugo ti, abantu abakelile zinda, baba no knigas, nama bazizi, zobe inyenge, ya, redue eskulumu ngayo. Kanya, ngoguti magune msebenzene, wa kulezo ndawo, kugo ugo ti, makutwa kulunya construction, labo ba antu bazu, tiba inyenge ukwazu, tiba sibenzela. Oesbi, ma okulumu ngare security, isafety, ufanele kpe la, kubuku ngaklezo ndawo, ugo ti, eh, ukkebenga benzela ku, ukkebenga, ukulula ma ngabe ku, ugo ti shala ngaklio ndawo because usuke wazu, ugo ti, abantu bakelile yonndawo, nama sektua kela ndelelo, kulu la futu tba wazu, tba batwot. Besi ugo ti, ugo nyumta kifisa, ngama nintisi, wa ku na mapoi sa ebakon itimeli, kwe sfiso se tu ugo ti, la mapoi sa buiswa, ngoba, uma ngabe ku, ugo ti koni security ot, veli suisa zomtato, umtimisema poise, sfisa ugo ti security wazu, osabenza kanya na, ama poise. Uma skulumu, ngopepa futu, skulumu, M Ka Queen, ama trucks, yo na atali ngosla kuli, ngenge ugo ti, ama kuuzo, la tetwala in bath, awaseko, so, umenyene, M Ka Queen, ama truck atali ngoseni. Kotwa ma ngasekto ya lungi, so besa kwe ama kuuzo, la watwali in bath, la neibonda na koro, yo wenzuka kuti, ngene pingos. Ngali ondela ge siyafiso ugo ti, sa abantu bakelile zonda, ngaba ugo ti, sbanke lumsi ndokpe la kumi sinsu se tu, kota, sibe inyenge ugo ti, siyazu, nama ngabe wenzeka la, sa si inyenge klungiswa la, ngabong.
Greetings to the members of parliament. I am Mancha Mgati from Ward 98, from the area called M Ka Baba, from the south region. Our railway lines are dysfunctional in my area, but I suggest that people should have ownership of these projects whenever they arise and but full participation should be there by the community. Crime can be prevented if we own the project and police should be brought back to work with the security men that are there. Trucks cause a lot of accident, we'll be very glad if the railway can be brought back to help the people in the community. Thank you.
Greetings to the members of the parliament and members of the community that I get to represent. Firstly, I'd like to apologize if I'm going to repeat any one of the members' issues that were raised and also if I have interpreted the bill incorrectly. So we talk about the railway safety bill and from what all the members have spoken here, it's quite clear, safety is the main priority and the bill does not talk to us about safety. I represent Ward 35 as the Transport Roads and Stormwater Portfolio Member. This covers from Virginia up to Ushlanga River, mostly on the M4. And there is no railway system in that area and we talk about routes and this is no disrespect to members that represent inland townships like Enanda, Verlim. These people in those areas come to Amklanga, which is now the hub of Durban and these people need to take three or four modes of transport to get to Amklanga, to work in the call centers, the hotels, the restaurants and the businesses in that area, including huge institutes like banks. The excess, I think one of the members spoke about disabled passengers, there is no excess for them to use these trains. We talk about technology and the current train service that's in place, there is no technology. If we align ourselves with the how train, where every member that's sitting here, including granddads that are 65 years old, knows how to use a cellphone, they should be able to go onto an app and book a train that has a schedule on an online system. And we should have bus services that take these people from the townships directly to the train stations that are closest to them. This will ensure safety for them and they do not need, most of them that work in the call centers start work between seven and eight. They are standing in queues in Amlazi, Mahoti, Quamashu, Verlim at four o'clock in the morning. Now, please understand, for them to be there at four o'clock, what time they have to leave their houses to get to those bus stops or trains that obviously do not work according to schedule. Many of them have raised the concern of schedule. The gentleman sitting here says time is of the essence. The other thing is the safety on the trains. Most of you may know about the thing called surfing on trains. And the reason for that is that the doors on the current railway passenger system we have open so easily that a 14-year-old can open the door while it's moving and these kids are surfing on the train, they call it surfing, that's endangering and many of them have lost their lives. I think the bill does not speak safety to us and that is what we're here for. Thank you.
Ngiso, kala nje, ngitrenkoni sagisla mbaye, uma ge, ngipinda, oseksio pambilini, nama ge, ngokhumusha, umtatosu vinio lona, ngogo, ngendla ngasion. Umtatosu vinio lona, au kulumi na, ngopepa, eh, la paya, eglen da, ngxala, ngxala futu ngisabenzela giwana, agukwa ge, eh, estechi, abantu ge, ba suga ge, eh, eh, ba hamba, uma be mlanga, ba tata ge, ama tegisi, ama tatu, uge zabayo fika ge, eh, misabenzini. Agukwa ge, ne ndawo, eh, zikandelu la ba, aba kuba segile, estechi, estechi ni, nano ugo ti ke, abukopetro pesho, ufagiwa la paya, eh, itimelini. Fane ngabe ge, ngiskatispila gusu, se konage, eh, mta wazi, ubuka, istimela, besa kubakonama basi, azo ba tata, bantelo kshini, abai se, eh, techi zeyitimela, logo ke, ogi opin sagisa ge, uge, pepa waba. Abantu ge, ba ge, ba yo, bamba, ama Q X N, ngofore X N, bezama ge, ufiga ngiskatimisabenzini, umundu maizoba mbikiu ngofore X N, bo, kaba ngutusu ge pumeni ngwak. Eh, gandike konana, lento ge, eh, bizwa, ngre train safi, la, ingane isuke, ilala konage, eh, eh, zilanga, nama zibapesu, kwe itimela, logo kubango ugo ti, lezi itimela si isabenzala ngenge manje, iwa, ika pa za konasvula, kaga galula, ngishinga na na fortini asingasvula, istimela besi hama, logo ke, gubulala, i ingane, zeninga, ingane se ifilesbulawa, logo, gandige, ngiso, tando gusho, ugo ti ke, lo, tatosu vinio au kulumi, ngopepa, ugo ti, ngabong.
Ngiso, bingalela, ngogo ilhala ikona, ngibingalela, nabobonge, ngjabanga phakati, logo kulumayo obongo, shewa gama kuaza. Onga panswa yo, iposhkore ya transport and road, tu enuist. Okulwazi, emna enze ngakulana, eh, okulumu, ugo ti, u railway siyachavu, ugo ti, uazu ugo sbezati, na sinkma leadership. Umphakati, kunyese nde ininga, oh shale, uwi pilli. Benfisutu, niven na lulwasu, ugo ti, kwe, kubene crisis, umphakati, N H Y, kubakona, kakulwazi, we save this, nano provide, umphakati, ngimsebenzi, ngayon, kele onduma ugo ti, kilungiswa, eh, eh, ochanchi, itimela in, uma ngi, ngjobesila, ngi ngelitashipo, bamile, ba fiso, usbozu, ugo ti, yine te siyele, kutiwa, nikzogenza galani, kuyanze galo, benfisutu, ngifakisitelo ge, mina ngi, umdo, uwi leadership, ugo ti, eh, ngati, umphakati, onga guna regelu, entene ngi, ngalezo, ubenulwasu, ugo ti, yine zogenza, ngati, niktinasi, leadership, pele, ngi, ngoba silanas, siya funu, kini sa zugu, isave si zoma njani, umphakati, zoprovite, kanyaani, senzula waninga, kulumu ngisafety, ye, nyefutu sinto, esamoga le. La, abana ekomblengaku, abantu, baybe ne komblengu, ugo ti uloliwe, kwe awazu, biza, abantu ugo ti, ma besu, ulalelu, ugo ti zogenza kanyaani, yine futu zowenzel, umphakati, kota, ente shaliki, chima pambili, ba funu utwala msebenzi, ba funu wazu, uma oksechenz zogenza njani, eh, oku nyefutu, kwe, uskata zee, uma sektua kwe, eh, eh, ngelenzo, osabenza, no kashwa na yonki into, kwe, kichi mlandi twa ma forum, kichi mlandi twa ma cancel. Ngipininku, kubane komblengu, ugo ti la ubandu, abakla xingkpinis, besa kubana, eh, u, 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 If savisesi kona, ashe shesha zatinakulitashipo, isheshiputi delivery emparatin ngia bom.
Greetings to the members of parliament and all protocol observed. I am Bongo Gulema Kuaza. We are happy the Transnet called us as people dealing with railway lines. They involved us previously. People that you represent want to know what we are doing. The community should be informed about all the developments that are coming and the main complaint is that they need to know about the job opportunities that are available. Most of the time we find that the councilors and other forums are consulted and a lot of corruption is involved there and people from other provinces are employed other than people around the railway line. That should be corrected. Thank you.
Oh, yeah, ngia be ngalela gushtalo, na hamba na. So people kulumeshatalo, kunengis kwenza lo. That was bigger space, eh? Seisho, 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 seisho. Masagia wenzaya, kube kwanaba nyava, abandava kuba se baktele twa kunya ngabe kusenza. So ge, na kuti, lla mbwele, twa iparlament, pa mashe xinji, lezi ya xinji anisi. Ni kobe sa ngokuluma ya koshale tae, besi pilebi kona. Kona.
Elela pimbo kweni opamkuaku, ifa okupi kusondele ngan.
Okay.
Sizo uzo akache ba.
Angikuzuile tala tae, kwanipilebi sabeta ngitu. Manje se afunegis khepe kana sate wenyipi. Umbozo amu kuti, e pilebi kona. Ngampela ngampela ngokpala ngasabenzanga kona, kuzesuwa zuketo ipelu. Entwenesi ibona uti nse, esnaba deskulumele katisi nta kusenza. Kona ge, mina ebemkulu kulu ma ge baba kuti. Tye nage yanga bantu, obumparati, kuti geskuluma ngama lunga leitu. Yavone ge itimela, guyaba iboyele. Koda konekinga kona, kuyamchambi istimela sot. Begunento labienzi wa gala, e bizwa ngutwi alternati. Kuti istimela mangabe sijami ile tlambe, iskatas ngango, 3 hours ngifanegis. Kube kwanama text, nomama pasi, ngani, aguazu klegelabantu, banga stack abantu neskati, benga fika limsebenzi. So lezo zinto ka isensi wa ngazi kutu kwenze ngani. Besa kuti ge enye balaye kaku. Yavole zitimela entelele hamba kusona. Kuna abandava nengi, ne ngani xalaki tusa, enye za, sa zezawazi. Ukte belo pa le twa kuti skivelene itimelen pezu. So asetige mpati tala, lagasianza, pele fencing. Kuti kubeni fencing, keto kwasu kulekwele, kuti ngani ngangke, ngikosi ya bo ngani ma, ma ikabangi ngani nistimela. Kati isawa kagota manje, so kuyi into je, ebas ngolo sa xingani istimela ngani ngalukusi. Besa kuti ge mpati tala lo konya, kwanke lo kuswenza yo, obani, omoni talente, tlaka ngage sianza. Yavosutu siyanimala kaku, nulakui mona talu. Na ni nama report pege tala. Aswa tola ma report pege kuti, lawate sekuluma kwenzegile in, nomaga, nomaga, iguflange saka ngakona. Xalali ne kune contact, ekona ngasosan ngiskati, because lezo zintaze. Besa s kuta kuti seti, lama sa sante lente, yavuti, so tata de umparati de, ngazi yasengenza ngani. So negazi ownership, yangu chavu. Because na kwanse, so kwanke lezi zintenje, ikute kaku le ente tuse, kuti si iboni onua, abandava tiza, wa tichine setu zegua, wa tichine suguazu, dienza ngano. Kuti sibe nama problem je, lama kuti, sibuisali itimela, e bandwi ngia bom. Okuzuti ngampela, nomo bani, ayencha kuti, ntoya amle, yakihon nto muntotiza. So ge, mina benga chabula, lama sa stikale, yavote, kule si skatas kona ngendla manje, yavu iboyele itimela. Besa la pale kuti, ngopi pilele, sa si ishi loka, ya isho kuti, Department of Transport. Isabeta ngokshala ngani, la ngalela, lala pala amategisi, nama pasi, nama pasi, kamaspa, koda wenzu ekba. So le bangwa lezi zintenje, no so akatira tsa njaya umparati, ngia bom akala.
Greetings. We have said a lot about some of these bills and some of it doesn't really happen. As I said, there was a bill in place, how did it not work? We as a community, we as a community need the trains. We are happy about them, but maybe we only get like one train. If we could have what was usually called alternating. If a train is stuck maybe for 3 hours or more, there would be buses or taxis that would be brought to assist. Also, we should look at the issue of fencing around train stations or railway lines because children are playing on the lines and that is quite dangerous. We also have a problem with monitoring. We don't have people who monitor what we do. Also, we do not get report bags. We should also give community ownership, bring these trains back to the people and they would also help. The Department of Transport must assist in terms of this because if there's no transport, we as a community are affected. Thank you.
Sanbonani, ika ma omkanyiseli, wangwa nyaa, frome watu wa nufo, watu wa nufo yu Guamashu, baslonisha. Si bingalela baslonisha bonke, ospa shele, na bonka bafetwa baka kona. In short, all protocol observed. Si bonge ni tuba kutesil tula yo. Uzostolela sala opambi. Maso sho onga faneli segu, sho gotoa, the reason is this. Ni vela ngani emparatin, so itu esiltula straight limsebenzi sa, no metalinga kolagrele. Pino wa itsa partur railway mostly. Je foresters, ngitabankle i party safety, lingo, yachange banxala Guamashu. For the whole day, istimala seso. Esasexeni, pidebe kone san tambam. So mobo abakibela, abape pilela. Kube istimala, mistimala sotwa, masu fida foot siyakwaala, ngalento ritwa wenzu, because we slinde for such a long time. So mu nyewo, omparabingu party si wuti, ngifi ngbuzo wana wa. Umutumaiswa lafuneka reporter pekutu bezezla, koto 1, 2, 3, 4. So bale yu tito si reporter si, kuto kwenzi, wai imisimala seso ta umasuwa. Enmankuma umasu, not about umasu pele. Umasu unenanda, unentuzuma, unelindelan, ma asuazu inotka ku. Bakua abandakwa, amateks from their own places, bago tui istimela, Guamashu Station. Bonka labanma zunela, istimela sotwa, pidebe kone sotwa esuwa ambam. Kubua ngati go unfair bafetwa, koto aga ngazi nospendu, kuto wai kwenza ngani. Okusbinile, e ngayi kuluma ktaala na, le mu nywala, eveno, nobabu mbalula, oro minister mbalula. Wenyabi minister ya wa transport, baidan, atiku minister wa pambili. Si komplena ge polistatione Guamashu, system SAPS polistation, but the papers are safe mostly. Wa ma yakoona, boni polistation ete SAPS, bakje kuti wana bapilo ngawa railway. So abapilo nginda, beni xanga any crime. Koda ma upera, we are vandalizer Guamashu Station, they there, they do nothing, they just sitting there, nama ven. Bashe nja, iku ndabayenza ngampela ngampela, ngazwa, koto aga ma be kony membersa kona la. Bazo ntolena, benfisutu umparati kuto u, kwenze kubulungiswa, iloko ngipela for the sake of time. Ume nyeso kulu nyu omning, ngia bom.
Greetings to parliament members and all protocol observed. I am Kanyeseni Ngwanya from Guamashu. Pardon as Jefferson if we say what you don't want to hear. In Guamashu, there's only one train that is working there. Congestion is very high and the community is not safe. All people from different places use this one train. The previous minister was informed about this, but nothing has been done. There is vandalism in trains in Guamashu. All we need is just justice. Thank you.
Kulu, thank you very much. I think we deserve to give each one who contributed and all of us a big round of applause.
Si bongala ku, si, bonka ba kulumilbatengi, isombe lenu, elikuulu. Elikuulu.
It normally takes courage to come and stand and give your input and it's really encouraging that people are able to speak boldly, which is what we want.
Kupuni kus, khasi spinde s kulka, kuto umtasa suguma, be kona kshoyo, kuba antu be bangaga. Kuba lega kulonke lu gati ni kusho.
One thing that needs commending also to the community around is your beautiful facility. I hope you can keep it as beautiful as it is and not vandalize it like the trains.
Ogonye, ogulhe ngan, kulekfunega ngonyo ngak. Uktena lisi skungo, si xlanze, kanga, asisi xleganga, ayen njungutimela lisenizi, regela pans.
We have listened to you, we have heard you and as I said earlier, our purpose is here to listen to you, but not to get into a question and answer session.
Si lalili lese zue nikshoyo, koto ngajo ngabe senghasil, aguke sopendula ngaje ngamange, besting ngaje lembono yin.
I will give to my colleague who will explain what is the process of what all your inputs you have given, what are we going to do with them? Because it's important that you know, now that you have spoken, what are the things that are going to happen? What is the process? Many people spoke about feedback, he will touch to that and so forth.
Ngiso besenka kuzawetu, kutsakaze, kutikuzogenze ngani, ulhelo zuku, be ngavakelu ge seni, kuduselige iti. Ash kuti nige zogenze, ankhasile ga bansu zinis.
After that, I will make one or two announcements, then the meeting will be adjourned. So I'll ask my colleague, Honorable Stoller, to do that.
Ngiso besenzi, meme zelurunje inbili, invaraloke, siyobisixlaga ze. Koto zawetu, umxlenishu stolus ostaze.
Angonge kulu kumpato shel.
Angonge, thank you very much, Jefferson.
Ngii, ngibonge, abantu abaxanga, sedomxanga, utu benpumela.
Thank you very much to the organizers of this meeting, as it is successful.
Angonge, I'm officials, nationally akona la, but not only kawa kona.
And also thank all the officials from the national parliament as well as interpreters available here.
Jengoba kategi, si shiro, usale shiro ati, njova sfigelas, zotela ama input eno. Nomaga, izi into eni, bona kuti, ololepili sngay, sngaylungisaga ngani.
As the Jefferson has just said, that as we are here, we are looking for your views, so that you air your views and your ideas, so that you...
I province yes, yes, tanu gele, yes, case that, and esgu yonamtsange.
This is the fifth province in case that, and that you have visited.
Yes, also, but this is Eastern Cape.
Next week, we are going to the Eastern Cape.
Amafige la, omanya randela, zobe, this is a free state.
The other weeks that are following will be in the Free State.
Zobe, say Northern Cape.
Northern Cape.
Zobe, say Western Cape.
As well as Western Cape.
Umasi swaka de la ma province.
When you have finished visiting all these provinces.
Zonke izi, ama loku izi into kade shonge yini.
All your views that you've been airing today.
Na guonka ma provinces.
From all the provinces.
Zobe, si sepeka kuti, ziti ni ngowe, ngowe, ngowe loku, ngowe, ngowe pili les, kuespege na. Nomomtutozivinyo les, pege na.
We'll scrutinize them and see whether they align to the bill that you are dealing with today.
Kukonakisinteni ishi lo.
There are things that you said.
Okfali lisenzinja zote ma, nomaspa.
Who we must communicate with the municipalities.
Fali tuma nama provinces.
The province is also.
Okumsebenzo, kfati ngabe bawenza, wenzua ibo etu zenan.
Who are supposed to do this, all this work, because they are near you.
Maso sitke dilage, si zorazu kala njenge committee ge, okpe kuti yini, okfali le sienze, ngamaloku ngai, ngaitribialen zobe ni ishi lo.
Ekteni ngakoko ngke. When we conclude, we are going to see what are we going to do when we amend this bill, sorry.
Uzuti committee ge, maso lisanga nsile, onke ge, izinteni ishi lo, lasalpeka ge, no, nemtato, nenmogomtato kfali landelo, nenmogobo kfali landelo.
If the committee has finished to check everything and to see which processes should be followed.
Zoe tata ge, iloke ge, i pile ge si se parliament.
Will take the bill to parliament.
Uma ge iparlament, eseli passesile.
If it passes in parliament.
Zobe, filila ge NCOP.
It will go to the NCOP, the National Council of Provinces. Omkantu, uyfunda aso, ose parliament.
Uma ge, si filila, mkadime funda aso, zizo akongamela.
It will go to the president.
President ge, ma esina, esisinelsile kuti, izi nomo, zepile esenzwe, parliament esenzwe, NCOP, zee yekobe se sae nage, ibase mtetu yin.
If the president is happy with the approval of the NCOP to this bill, so he will be able to sign it and it becomes an act.
Okfali zvuma ge, okunyukuti, nyoba nchilona ti itimela, iloke, i polo zivandalize, a itimela zenu, aziko la ifiga kona.
As you said, the railways are vandalized and the trains are disturbed to move through.
Jenge portfolio committee ge, zokutsela gu, Department of Transport.
Will take this as committee to the Department of Transport.
I, i prasa, jowate, nkuluma ngayo, zee iloke entity ye, ye, ye koriye transport.
Because prasa is an entity to transport.
Galenze, lakasitelukubonga kaku, lukinonke, ngazuk, tadeskatsen, nuku ilisonto. Nize, lanano kuti ge, sinitale linze, lenze, ninanonke, ngani nemdi nien, ashtoze kaku.
Thank you very much for spending your time with us here. You neglected all other businesses you could do. When you go home, go well and go well.
Thank you, thank you very much, colleague, siyabonga jobe. We have come to the end of this session.
Se si semapachelinale ulhelo.
One simple announcement is that there is something to eat that has been prepared.
Is meme zelulini, setikukona, kuyanga setunji, nesizoktola.
Our request is that, in order to maintain order in that distribution.
Ukuzenge kobe noktula, nenzi la, kutsiksebenze ge kache.
Those people with orange stickers, orange stickers.
Abane itika ez, orange, lokoke nganyati selila.
Will be the first ones to be served.
Ybona bokala ba, zukwazu ksisagala.
And those with yellow stickers.
Labava namastikaza, pose, ayel.
Will follow thereafter.
Bazo landila, genabimfawaloko.
Thank you once more, siyabonga, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you guys, thanks. Yo, hi. Agunzi, matches, yo, 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 yo. Upano. Yo, interpretive.
I, I took notes for everything.
And then who are they referring to when they say they do?